The 2022 Budget and Tax Levy. I now declare that public hearing open. And we have Ms. Engelstand and then Mr. Martig, who will be giving the presentation. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. This is the public hearing for the 2022 Budget and Tax Levy this evening, and it will include opportunity for public input at the end.
Brenda, can you put it into presentation mode?
Oh, yes.
And Ms. Peterson, while we're waiting for that, if you could please just let me know if there's anybody joining us virtually that is hoping to speak, that would be appreciated. Thank you. Please, go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. So I am Finance Director Brenda Engelstad, and together with the City Administrator Ben Martig, we'll be presenting the City Council's proposed 2022 budget meeting this evening. Agenda will be the staff presentation, public comment, and then adoption. Adoption could be done at a future December meeting, however, it needs to be completed prior to year-end. The budget is a six-month process with back and forth between council, staff. Key dates are highlighted above. Council held work sessions in July and August. July was the Strategy and High Level Debt Personnel Meeting, and August had Department Details and overall levy. The preliminary levy is set in September. Feedback is still incorporated throughout the process, and tonight would set the final We've used this slide in past years. It's just a good refresher to see how the tax rates are calculated in Minnesota. The two primary inputs are the parcel tax capacity, which is, starts with the estimated market value and the tax classification, and then the total city tax levy. And the levy, again, is impacted by revenue that's received from other sources and the expense levels as well. This slide is showing the increase in estimated market value and net tax capacity versus prior year. So we'll see that estimated market value increased 6.4%. And the net tax capacity, which is adjusted for homestead inclusion exclusion class rate and TIF, increased 6%. And of this, this is the accumulation of both Rice and Dakota County. Rice County is approximately 90% of the total estimated market value for Northfield, and the remaining amount is Dakota County. This slide is showing net tax capacity increased 6% for 2021 for taxes payable in 2022. Rice County increased about 5.7% and Dakota County 8.7%. The trend has been increasing since 2014 and surpassed the 2010 level for the first time with the 2018 valuation. So what it really is just showing that it took several years for the market to recover after the market value decreases of the '08 recession. This slide, again, the top one, is showing total levy. Next chart is net tax capacity and the city tax rate at the bottom. What it really shows that if tax levy goes up and net tax capacity go up by a comparable amount, the tax rate can stay fairly stable. When one increases more, that's when you see the tax rate change. This slide is showing the 2021 median home value, and you can see the increase in both counties. Rice County was up 6.7% and Dakota County only 1.1% this year. However, they had a larger increase last year. And the average home value in Rice County is 256,300. The average home price in Dakota County is 322,300. This is a slide prepared by Rice County, so it's just showing Rice County, not Dakota County, but you can see the total tax increase by property. So this is a reflection of both market value and levy changes. And this, the last slide was just the city of Northfield. This slide is all of Rice County, and you can see there's more blue on this map that shows some of the rural areas. Ag land properties may see decreases in taxes versus last year. This slide shows property tax comparison to some of our neighboring communities, and based on a 2020 comparison, it showed similarly valued homes in these neighborhoods or in these communities. And if you look at the blue, you can see that the Northfield city tax is comparable to Farbo's city tax. But when you look at the total, their overall tax rate is lower, primarily that they have much smaller contributions toward their schools. This slide shows that property taxes are split between city, county, and school district. The school district's broken out into two parts based on the referendum market value and net tax capacity. But overall, the school represents 42% of the total, the city 35%, and the county 23%. This slide we've shown before in earlier presentations, but again, it's showing that Northfield is in both total levy dollars and in levy dollars per person. For 2021, we were fourth from the lowest in both of those funding sources. With this 11.6% increase, we'd still be 1.2 million below the average, which is 9% below the average of this peer group. What's also not noticed on this is that eight of the 13 peer group cities also have franchise fee revenue, and some of that goes into the general fund, but that's not included in This is a new slide you haven't seen before, but Northfield's industrial estimated market value is 23% of the peer group average. So improving the city's industrial tax base is a priority of the strategic plan and in particular, community development staffing investments in 2022. So here we can see that the certified 2021 levy was 10.6 million. The preliminary levy set in September at 15% was 12.2. It's been adjusted down to a recommended level of an 11.6 increase, which is 11,852,323. There was some consideration for ARPA-eligible expenses and use of reserves when we came to that number. This slide is showing the 11.6% levy increase and the impacts on a variety of valued homes in Rice County. The TNT statements were mailed with a 15% increase. Current proposals at 11.6. And when I talked before, the first, we'll see a gray line in the upper section, and that's the Rice County value home, and then the second gray outline is the average Dakota County home. So using the new proposed levy, the average Rice County home will see an annual increase of $77.30 per year or $644 per month, which is a reduction of $46 a year or $380 a month from the original 15% levy and the numbers that would show on the TNT statements that people received. And the average Dakota County home will see an increase of $102.27 or $836 a month, and that's still a reduction of $59 a year or $490 a month from that preliminary levy and the TNT statements. This one we're showing is sample property tax statement from Rice County. It shows, the top portion shows the valuation changes. The bottom portion shows the individual tax by entity, school, county, or city. And if there are questions regarding that valuation, those need to be addressed with the county assessor's office, and they hold those meetings in the spring when the valuations Okay, this is a new slide, and slides similar to this have been used by other cities, but show that your city tax, which pays for city services, is ultimately a good value. It compares other monthly expenses incurred by the average homeowner. So the average home in Northfield, based on the Rice County average, pays less in city tax per month than the average wireless phone family plan. And with city services, you're covering things like police, fire, public works, snow plowing today, parks, and library. If we did the same chart with the Dakota County average, the monthly tax would be $165, which is still comparable to that wireless phone family plan. The next three slides were included in Abdo, Ike, and Meyer's audit presentation in June. This one is showing that the city of Northfield's taxes per capita are lower than all compared However, Northfield's tax rate is higher than peers, and the industrial tax capacity and the overall mix of our tax capacity partially drives this. So again, addressing that tax capacity is part of our strategic plan objectives. And remember, the earlier slide on the tax rate calculation shows that both levy and tax capacity impact that tax rate. Long-term debt is lower than peers. It's trending up slightly as the projects have gotten larger in recent years. This chart is reflective of the overall citywide levy increase of 11.6%. Notice that the general fund levy is the largest portion of the levy at 71%. Other operating levies, total 6%. Debt, adding all the debt together adds up to 18% of that levy, and EDA and HRA together are 5%. And this pie chart shows the 2022 revenue broken down by type. The general fund levy represents 53% of the city's total revenue. Intergovernmental revenue is the next largest at 26% and is primarily made up of LGA. Approximately 80% of that total intergovernmental is LGA. The 2022 estimate for LGA is 3.3 million, which is an increase of just under 1% from 2021. Intergovernmental also includes MSA maintenance, state police relief, and state fire relief. Let's see, some of the other categories, the other tax categories, primarily lodging tax, which gets, you know, we're really just a flow-through. And then charges for services are 9% of the total. That includes engineering fees, the ice arena, pool revenue, and administrative charges to other funds. And then licenses and permits are 4%. All right, this is just another breakdown of the 2022 expense by area, so it shows the same expense previously by department. Here you see public safety is the largest at 37%, followed by general government at 21% and public works 20%, library at 10%, and recreation at 9%. And you probably know all of these, but public safety includes police, fire, and building inspection. General government includes mayor and council, administration, city clerk, elections, finance, human resources, community development, planning, and general government, building ops. Public works includes engineering, streets, street lighting, and facilities. Recreation includes general parks, pool, ice arena, and athletic facilities. And library includes all the services provided by our library. All right, another pie chart, again, showing the same numbers by expense category. Personnel services is the largest component at 65% of the total, which is salaries, taxes, and benefits. Charges for services is the next largest at 25%. That's other professional services, legal services, IT charges, telephone, media, mileage, training, and conferences. These numbers, again, the 2022 expenditures, include the 6.7 FTEs that we've built into the budget, and that was reflected in both of the last two charts. And with that, I will hand it over to Ben.
Thank you, Brenda. Next slide, please. So moving on a little bit to some of the detail highlights on the budget, as it relates to some federal funds that the City Council has received this year and will be receiving another allocation next year, as well as some use of reserves. Council authorized the use of general fund reserves in July of this year for the City Hall Safety and Security Project and remodeling of City Hall. The total of that project's $826,000. We believe, based on current guidance, this type of expense is now expected to be eligible for ARPA funding, which would free up some previously allocated general fund reserves to be used for other one-time strategic plan or other items. In the budget process, we're showing $335,000 in use of general fund reserves to cover these items with a transfer from that ARPA funding. We've only received 50% of that funding, and the remaining will come next year with that. Some of the use of the reserves, you can see $210,000 in some studies that the council has identified as priorities, as well as some staffing positions to be phased in, using some of these reserve funds to basically reduce some of the levy impact, to delay some of that for a couple of years using these one-time funds. So the council's identified in the strategic plan, a comprehensive plan update, some additional dollars this year, including, or next year, including some carryover from this year. Looking at Highway 246 turnback analysis related to some highway improvements that might open up the city and/or county to additional funds from the state as they evaluate turning that back to a more local road designation. Looking at park study to identify park needs and prioritization to move forward with kind of a funding strategy and prioritization around our parks, capital planning in the new year. And then, as Brenda talked about a little bit, a position within the Community Development Department really focused on growing that tax base and putting some additional resources to try and address that need. And then, last of all, increasing our current Spanish translator in our communications department from a half-time to a full-time position. As it relates to those funding, there is a special committee that's assigned that has been on hold but will be meeting to determine additional funding allocations that will be much more furtherly explored in 2022. Next slide. So as it relates to budget forecasting and reserves, just a few highlights kind of as we look at budgeting. The city does have an established council-adopted fund balance policy related to budgeting that we do follow. We review those balances every year as part of this budget process. It's looked at during the audit and then the budget planning. The targeted reserves are adjusted based on the projected expenses change. So as an example, within our general fund, we have a six-month operating reserve. So if the operating expenses are increasing in the upcoming year, we adjust the reserve fund to reflect that as well. This is closely looked at by our bond rating where we do debt issuance. So S&amp;P has been our bond rating agency, their review of these percentages to ensure that, to verify that the city's actually following its adopted policies. Northfield's been particularly noted for, because of some of our reserve policies and dedication to following those. It's actually helped to keep our interest rates very low. It's about as low as it can be on our rating that we can get based on a community, our size with the size of economy that our community has. So it's really been called out for best fiscal management practices of the city to follow those fund balance policies. To give an idea of kind of carryover funds from year to year in last year's audit, we had a carryover of $850,000 to the good, which seems like a really big number, but when you look across the total budget that the city has, you're talking point, less than a percent over budget on revenue, so to the good on revenue. And to the good on expense, we are 4.8% under budget. So when you look at a percentage basis, it's actually pretty close. So generally speaking, I would say this is a very good place to be as we look at budgeting close to our revenues and expenses and our practices that we followed as a city. And so, you know, varying from that or trying to be more loose with some of our projections could put the city at risk by basically creating higher potential liability that we could end up under, you know, over budget in a particular year, which is definitely not the goal. As it relates to when we do have those carryovers, last year was a little bit different, too, where in 2020, the city intentionally, council intentionally did set aside additional contingency reserves in anticipation of the pandemic potentially having major economic impacts. The positive thing was, we didn't end up having that. So the council used, you know, one-time funding for these things like on the City Hall project that otherwise would have to be done with like debt or be delayed on improvements as an alternative. So best practice for the use of these reserves is to typically do one-time expenses. Now, again, on my last slide, I did talk about transitioning of some positions over time is being proposed on the translator and community development position that I talked about as well, but is an example of that to consider. So, next slide. We do have a number of positions, full-time positions, that the City Council is proposing with this budget this year. And tried to identify some of those specific areas where they fit in our strategic plans. I'm just going to comment on some of these positions as well. So on the, what we're calling the evidence technician, the titling slightly changing on that. It's basically a data analyst position and also management of new public data that we have related to our body camera implementation that has happened this year. And so that has been a position that was planned when the council made the decision last year, and it's really hitting our operating funds next year with that. And that was done as part of an independent study along with the police officer, additional police officer position that's being added. The council had an independent analysis completed a number of years ago, looking at department operations and staffing needs. And with the addition of these two positions, it would put the city at the recommended staffing levels within the police department to meet that minimum, to meet those recommendation targets with these added positions. So these have been in a number of the years, in the planning, within a number of years. The police officer position will particularly be beneficial to meeting call demands at peak time and allow the department to shift, have more proactive contacts with the community as recommended by the President's Task Force on 21st Policing Reforms. Also with, with time off that people have as well allows some additional flexibility with that. Community development, economic development position, talked about that before, to help attract new businesses to offset the tax burden on residents, the council's setting aside some dollars. And again, these ones have some unique funding that we're using to phase that in. On the community, other community development department position related to an assistant planner to focus on a healthy downtown and assisting in development plan reviews to help with business development. Half of that funding is really roughly halves about offset by a previous private contract with the Northfield Downtown Development Corporation, which was on our consent agenda this evening, where we're changing that from an outside consulting contract and bringing that in-house to do some of that work. So some of that's just basically going from a contract and merging that to create a full-time equivalent. On our Spanish translator position, to make sure the city's serving all of its community members and expanding Spanish translation services across communications of the city. We've been implementing that at a halftime, and it's been very well-received, and we've used it in daily operations, too, to have a non-staff translator to be able to call in. Horticulturist position to plant and maintain the flowers and landscape beds in the downtown and parks that we have. So it's a public works position who will also be focusing in the seasonally to help that. We've been fortunate as a city to have some volunteer work that's happening related to overseeing some of the, some of the work on that, and there's some transitioning going on on some of that volunteer work, so we'll be able to fit that in. The arborist responsibilities do fit within our climate action plan as well, related to tree management, related to the city's goals to increase the tree plantings within the community and also better management practices of the trees we do have. The civil engineering staff person will help manage $34 million in planned street and utility projects and to oversee some of the riverfront enhancement work that we have. And some of those are being offset by fees and work that we have within our debt issuance. And then, last of all, our Northfield public broadcasting position, which helps keep the community informed, where we know there's trends across cities with residents hungry for more public information about services and activities within communities. This will go from a part-time to a full-time position and funded partially through our communications fund that comes through our franchise fees as a city. So those are some of the highlights, a number of positions that we're looking at. Next slide. Certainly is unusual with the number of headcounts being proposed. For one year, the city's been talking about these, as we talked about for a number of time periods. If you look at historical trends, though, there have been shifts, and particularly back in 2001, where the city received significant LGA cuts, state cuts due to state decreases of revenues that they were seeing from economic impacts following 9/11. And then, the, then again, in 2008 recession, also saw additional dip then. If you look at total headcount of full-time equivalents in the city, though, this really puts us back pretty similar to where the city was back in 2002 with that, 2002 levels. This is not, you know, although there's a jump here, too, this trending does not necessarily mean that that would be continuing. Again, these have been looked at for a number of years and is filling needs in a number of areas that have been identified over a period of time and kind of hitting this next year's budget on kind of a planned one-time increase in some of those positions. Next slide. Some highlights on the strategic plan I wanted to call out. Now, not all of these have direct dollars assigned attributable to them, but do require, in some cases, significant staff resources and time being dedicated. So I'll just hit on some of these. Community branding, looking in that communications fund from cash that we have, one-time community branding exercise to do marketing of the community, helping to ultimately stimulate our economic activity, to try and recruit and brand our community. The council's identified in our Riverfront Action Plan a goal to designate a regional river park designation through the state, and that will hopefully open us up to additional grant resources by going through that park designation. City's in the middle of flood improvement study along the Riverwalk and the River Corridor to determine upgrades to protect private and public property from flooding, changes in, in river levels that we've seen historically. And will also be moving into a dam reconstruction study as well for next year as part of that riverfront enhancement plan. So that will be some of the work being, being happening at that time. The City Council is seeking state of Minnesota bond funds to fund Milltown's Trail, State Trail, within the city of Northfield, and would really be timely related to public improvements planned over the next five years. I mentioned already the community development staff, so I won't cover that again. On our housing goals as a community, the city assisted in some financing of the infrastructure to extend Ford Street with the Bluff View Housing Development, Spring Creek Two Construction, which is an affordable housing project our Housing and Redevelopment Authority's been working on with partners for a number of years, is planned for construction next year. We just, bids got completed and some additional funding resources have been identified. The rental housing ordinance to improve health and safety standards, clarification, and enforcements in process, that's more one of a time commitment. And the HRA is looking, expanding rental rehabilitation programs through some federal dollars called community development block grants to assist with that. The council also threw some of these ARPA funds and other designated funds also have invested in the Community Action Centers Hillcrest Village project as well. Next slide. Quality facilities and for the city within the strategic plan, I talked about the park study that's underway. We're exploring changes that was in the council approval this evening with the city to take on more direct responsibility of the NCRC building, which we own. And we do partner with 50 North in providing half of the operational cost of the recreational operations of 50 North. There is a remodel and expansion under review related to facilities that will be looked at next year. The ice arena will continue to look at upgrades to the ice system that we know is going to have to transition, updating cost estimates to take another look at the ice arena and what potentially to do with the current physical condition of that building next year. Liquor store site analysis continues to look at. Ames Park Master Plan will be part of our park planning as well for next year, so we've got dollars to do some master planning of that park. And the private installation of the residential broadband deployment that the council approved this year will be getting completed next year. It's planned for 100% completion by the end of the year to really provide high-speed broadband into our residential areas, which is underserved currently. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, I talked about the translator position. We're going to be continuing the Emerging Leaders Program, serving, trying to encourage traditionally underserved populations within the community to be leaders within our community on boards and commissions in a partnership with the University of Minnesota Extension Service. We're continuing equity collaborative work on employment and housing issues, including some training and speakers with partners with our school district and HCI on that. And then continuing within our library operations, Hispanic heritage and pride celebrations as some of our work within diversity, equity, and inclusion. Next slide. Next slide. Comprehensive Plan Update, I talked about the city council has identified department analysis annually to do at least one. The Department of Motor Vehicles will be doing a study on service analysis and implementation, evaluating kind of hours of service and maybe making some changes there as well as some marketing. Police evidence, staff we've talked about in patrol already. And then the, we'll be working with the city council on some board and commission governance revisions and onboarding and training expansion to build the capacity of our advisory boards and commissions and appointed public officials. Climate action, we did establish a new carbon reduction fund as part of the climate action plan, so there is dollars in the budget related to implementing climate action efforts primarily from some of the new franchise fees being generated. That's also helping to primarily fund street improvements. The tree planting, we did receive a grant for tree planting related to the climate action work. So the state of Minnesota provided us a substantial grant to build that, to get additional planting to, in response to planning for Emerald Ash Borer. We're exploring clean energy transition plans to implement alternative energy for public facilities onsite options and others. And we're continuing to have a Vista Mobility, a staff person help us with implementation of alternative transportation options. We're also offering some residential and business of energy efficiency rebates that will be rolled out through our HRA and EDA next year. Some investments in city facilities on LED lighting conversion to save dollars and to improve energy efficiencies. We're also looking at of capital purchases, five vehicles and charging infrastructure that will be moving to either hybrid or electric vehicle transition for our fleet. And then council's in the process of developing a sustainable building policy related to when the city offers financial assistance for business subsidies and other assistance to have minimum energy efficiency, sustainable building design standards as part of those requirements. Next slide. I did talk about the communications fund revenue, about 232,000 a year. The revenue's been fairly stable even though our subscribers are dropping, so we are continuing to track closely to see if we're going to see more cutting of the cord in that revenue. We're also, city's also exploring some advocacy related to some changes in the franchising to be expanded, to be able to be used for telecommunications in addition to just cable access. We are using some one-time uses of funds, so you can show that we do have a fund balance about 700,000. We are using a chunk of that cash, so we're actually operating, we're dipping into reserves for one year related to some improvements related to our communications equipment and other that we have. Next slide. Our Economic Development Authority, the council is recommending in this budget, going to the maximum levy allowed under statute, which has been the long history. So about 326,000 in revenue annually. Some of the projects that they'll be looking at is some implementation of some minority immigrant owned business, economic efforts that have been looked at. We're changing our partnership with business accelerator work and business planning within the community, working with a new partnership out of the metropolitan area. And so the EDA is changing some of that, continuing to offer micro grants for downtown businesses and economic development loans for business expansion, facade improvements continuing in the downtown that have been a success. And then looking at some incentives related to riverfront enhancement. Next slide. Our HRA revenue of about 382,000, a little over, again I mentioned Spring Creek Two. They are expanding into residential rehab programming that will continue and then down payment assistance. And then I mentioned the CAC Hillcrest Village Project. Next slide. Earlier in September, the council did adopt our utility rates. It does blend into our final adopted budget. We're not going into detail on this since it's been presented in much greater detail back in September when these were adopted. But we do five-year rate studies over time and the current rates. The new utility rate study was done in 18. So as you can see on this, the estimated impact of the average user for next year will be $1.15 per month. So you can see the bill going up from just over $70 a month to just over $72 per month in the breakout by fund for the water department on the bottom in blue, wastewater in orange, stormwater in gray, and then the garbage fund in yellow. Next slide. A little over a million, 1.1 million dollars in expenses are planned for investing in our capital equipment, building inspections, vehicle, fire tanker, truck, facilities, cargo van, police squads, water department vehicle, truck snow blower, street roller and street bucket truck, or some of those. Some of our utility funds are paying for those, but you can see some of those identified as either electric vehicles or hybrids that we're transitioning. Next slide. These are just a few of the capital improvement plan highlights. So we got 262,000 in just kind of maintenance items to keep up our buildings and facilities that the city owns. We have our major mill and overlay project where we typically do one a year. So the northwest area, the council's doing some planning and we're also expanding some sidewalk and trails. Those do kind of hit our debt, so they're not directly operating funded for next year's budget. Sackler Road is doing some improvements on the railroad crossing. Highway 20, Highway Three, excuse me, we did get a grant for some traffic signal upgrades that will allow for our public safety vehicles in effect to have a system to, I forget the terminology here, on basically to... Emergency vehicle preemption, thank you from staff over in the corner. So that if the emergency vehicles are coming through, it turns it to a green light for them. So we did get a state grant for some of that cost. Wall Street Road redesign work is beginning for next year for a major improvement for the year after. And Babcock Lions Park Bathroom Remodeling, we're doing some planning to upgrade our existing bathrooms to really meet minimum ADA accessibility standards and carryover of outdoor pickleball courts are planned where we had some cost overruns that we're hoping to get completed for next year. Next slide. So that is a lot of information. The attached resolution being recommended includes that 11.6% citywide levy increase. This is a decrease from the one back in September, which was the maximum. It does include a number of reserves and as I talked about the strategic plan. Next slide. So this hearing includes really touching on all of the action items, so we're not planning a separate presentation or comments from the public on the individual action items scheduled to follow after the public hearings closed. So we have the adoption of the EDA and the HRA tax levies, which would be the first item, a combined tax levy that includes those EDA and HRA ones, but also all the other city funds. Then corresponding to that adoption, the city budget and then the capital, five-year capital improvement plan and five-year capital equipment plan would be part of that as well. So with that, I turn it back over to the mayor at this point to proceed with the public hearing. Part of the agenda that completes our presentation this evening.
All right. Seeing no one, we will bring it back to the dais here for council questions. Are there any council questions at this time? Questions? Councilmember Nakazian?
I'd like to ask some questions to repeat points that were made in the discussion, just to make sure that I can jive the presentation that staff's made with some of the comments tonight from our public. My first question has to be, if you would review that slide that shows what the 17%, what does it mean per household value? Of course, properties values is not something that our city controls. We don't set the value. But you gave a slide that showed what 11.6 means for a house worth this much and that much. Could you show us in numbered terms what the outrageous, you know, what we're talking about here in financial terms, per household, per year?
Thank you for the question. Yes, so we went back to slide 16 and you can see that, so the average Rice County house is 256,300. And that would yield based on the tax change, $77.30 a year would be the annual increase or $6.44 a month without any valuation increase.
So just so I'm clear, for a person that owns a house of that value and some have houses that are worth more and some have houses that are less, you're talking about a change of $77?
That's correct.
I just want to make sure I have that right. That's what I thought you said. I'm fine with the answer to the question if anyone else needs further clarification. I just wanted to make sure I heard that right and I have some other questions too.
Please go ahead.
Just to be clear, does the city have the ability to levy an income tax?
I defer to Mr. Martig, but I believe no.
Thank you, Councilor Mayor. No, the city council, the city has the authority, very limited property tax, and then we have some limited like franchise fees or utility fees that we can charge, so we can't do an income tax.
Thank you. So it's really clear to understand we have a really limited toolbox and have to balance property tax and industrial tax, which has been said is down 23% compared to our other cities. I'll yield to other questions so I don't dominate the conversation.
Ms. Engels, could you go back to the PowerPoint slide with regards to industrial properties?
This is the key right here.
So can you give further explanation with regards to this slide where you say that Northfield's industrial estimated market value is 23% of the peer group? Can you just? Can you talk about that a little bit more and how we relate and what that chart shows, please? I just, it's the first time that I've seen it like this and I just want to make sure I understand it.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. This is showing, we don't have the details, but it's showing the estimated market value of the industrial portion of each of our peer cities. So you can see that New Hope is well over $350,000, whereas the city of Northfields is, I can't, you know, 25 to 30,000 or 30 million. So you're seeing the difference here is, and if you take the average of all of them, we're saying we're 23% of the average of all of our peers.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions with regards to this slide? Can, oh, yes, Councilor Grabah?
Just for folks that are listening, is it correct that the reason we are talking about industrial tax base is because industrial properties pay twice the rate of residential properties?
That's correct.
Another question?
Yes. Councilmember Nakazian?
Yeah, thank you. And could you elaborate a little bit on what are the, what types of sectors, what types of, what makes up the industrial sector? What's included in that?
Right, there are two other, there's a commercial and an industrial and commercial would, it looks to be, we're fairly close on our commercial side, which I think would be a lot of the retail. But industrial would be the larger, you know, manufacturing, other types of industry within the city.
Thank you.
All right, yes, Councilmember Nakazian?
Anybody else? I wondered, has there been any change in the amount of our land, our taxable land mass? If I remember, 35% of Northfield's land base is not taxable. It's held by other than, other than taxable entities, businesses privately owned properties. It's owned by schools and churches. Has there been any change in that total land mass in this 20 years?
Not that I'm aware of. We'd have to go back to the county to kind of see those numbers and they don't track valuations on, on some of those tax exempt properties the same way they do on the tax paying properties. So some of those numbers we've asked and are a little hard to get.
Okay, so am I right in saying like the total amount that we need to cover in our budget, in our attempt to balance our budget draws from 60%, 65-ish percent of our land?
Correct. Not 100% of our land like in these other cities. Thank you.
Mr. Martig, did you have anything further you wanted to add with regards to this?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm not real familiar with, I'd have to do some analysis on the taxable, non-taxable portion. I do know that these other cities would have non-taxable properties in them too. I just haven't done an analysis to look at what percentage is exempt versus not. But, you know, Fairbowl is an example, has a number of exempt properties that are also some major employers in their community as well. Yet they do, yet they are kind of on the higher level of the tax base too.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions with regards to any of the material that was shared here this evening by staff?
I got one more.
All right, Councilmember Nakazian?
Would you go back and talk about Dakota County again? We talked about Rice and Dakota, reminding us, when is a line, not a line? And the answer is North Avenue, where it separates two worlds. Two different, very different counties. Elaborate a little bit more on what we know about the Dakota County portion of our taxable community.
Okay, so we do, I think there was a slide earlier where we show that Dakota County is roughly 10% of our tax base as compared to Rice County being 90%. And the one slide, this one, again, shows that the average home value in Dakota County is valued at more than the average home value in Rice County. So we showed both examples on this table to show the average value in Rice County is the 256 and in Dakota County it's 322. But again, you have to factor that in with Dakota County's only 10% of the total.
Right. I'll yield, I've got to formulate my question. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Ness, a question?
Thank you. On the ARPA funds that the council approved or talked about, I don't remember which it was, it was on your list. The one that hit me was the park studies was at 75 and we approved 87 in the consent agenda. Is that a problem?
Yes, the remainder of that would be covered through the parks budget.
Okay, thank you.
And for the sake of...
All right, another question?
Just a point, if we could not use acronyms, because a lot of people don't, AR, AR, American Recovery Act, let's speak English like, you know, the, not, no offense, but no acronyms.
All right, any other questions? Okay, all right. Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Councilmember Peterson White?
Still moved.
Ness, your second. Councilmember Ness?
Second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. These remaining resolutions here that are all related to the budget and tax levy, and so we will not be taking additional public input, but as part of normal process, I'll ask for a motion. There'll be a second and there'll be an opportunity to discuss. If you have further questions that have not been addressed and they come to mind for you, I would entertain those as, as always. All right, so this next agenda item is the consideration of adopting the 2021 payable 2022 Economic Development Authority and Housing and Redevelopment Authority tax levies. It's Resolution 2021-120. Is there a motion? Councilmember Nakazian?
I move. I move 2021-120 as written.
Okay, is there a second? Councilmember Peterson White?
Second.
All right, excellent. Discussion, Councilmember Nakazian or Councilmember Peterson White, anything that you'd like to add at this point? All right, yes, Councilmember Nakazian?
Just to point out that the work of the EDA in combination with the staff additions on economic development is the most important infusion we can make to the community to increase our industrial base and use our rail infrastructure and get new business and employers into the city so that we can relieve the burden that we currently have to balance to our residential properties. So I'm glad to bring this motion and hope all the smart thinkers that are out there will contribute to the thinking and work of the EDA to increase our industrial tax base. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Peterson White, anything else?
I guess I would just add, as a member of the Economic Development Authority for the last several years, I'm extremely proud of the work that we've done in that body to lay the groundwork for the kind of economic growth that will support a more balanced tax base for the community that will alleviate the burden on homeowners. I, I think we all agree that regressive property taxes are not a great way to pay for things, but they are the only tool that we have really. One of, they're, they're the main tool we have. We have a couple other small tools in the tool bag. But, so investing in the Economic Development Authority's work in order to grow that commercial and industrial tax base is one of the best investments that we can make. Meanwhile, the housing, the work of the Housing and Redevelopment Authority is extremely important in these times when we're seeing some pretty wild inflation in home prices as has been identified here tonight. I think that trend is very clear to everyone who lives in Northfield, and it makes it increasingly difficult for our community to be an inclusive place to live for all different kinds of people with, who do all different kinds of work. And I think it's safe for me to speak for all of my fellow counselors when I say that that's, that the Northfield we want to maintain and build is one where everyone can afford to live, and that's why we support the work of the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, because that is their charge.
Anyone else? All right, seeing no one, all those in favor of Resolution 2021-120, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next order of business is the consideration of adopting the 2021 payable 2022 tax levy. It's Resolution 2021-121. Is there a motion? Councilmember Peterson White?
Sorry, I keep thinking my mic is on when it's off and off when it's on. I think I've got it now. I move Resolution 2021-121.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Nakazian?
Second.
All right, thank you. Discussion. Again, the mover and seconder, if you have anything?
I'll keep my comments brief, there are so many issues brought up tonight. We, of course, have been hard at work on this budget for months now, and have worked through every detail of this budget, along with our excellent staff. I feel very confident that the budget is balanced, that the, that the, the work that we are investing in with this budget is the most important and essential work for the people of Northfield, and what will, and it's the work that will build a future that can include prosperity and inclusion for everyone in our community. And I think we've been very careful about those investments. These are challenging times for everyone in so many ways, and there are a lot of unusual economic factors at play right now that are making things extra difficult for a lot of people, and, and unpredictable for many people. I think that the, the, the careful investments that we are making as a part of this budget lay the groundwork for a steady and even keeled Northfield going into the future. That's always been my goal as a counselor. There have been years in my time on the council when we have set artificially lower levies that mean that in subsequent years, we have to raise taxes more. There have been years when the effective property taxes of people at certain home prices have, have not reflected the reality of the city's needs, and what that means is that sometimes we have slack that we have to pick up. And so that's a reason that I have always supported steady, not-too-great increases, and I, I know that this, the double digits are hard for people to take, and I really, I really want to recognize that that's, it's a challenging thing to, to see. But I, we ask for the, for the, for the trust of the community, that we have, and our staff have very carefully vetted these investments as the ones that will result in a thriving and prosperous community for everyone. And I, I also want to recognize that there are a couple of really good points that have been made tonight about the nature of property taxes, and that were also made in the comments. One thing that came up in the, in the comments that we received electronically was that some of the things that we invest in are related to visitors to Northfield, and that make Northfield a destination for people. That is never our primary focus. Our primary focus is in serving the residents of Northfield and the property owners of Northfield, but, but of course, maintaining thriving downtown is economically important for people who live here. Having a downtown that people want to visit is economically important for the community. It's true that, the point that was raised is that those visitors to our community don't pay property taxes, but they do pay lodging tax often, which is another way that we fund some of the work that the city does. They also pay sales tax, which goes to the state, which supports some of our work as well. The city has also pursued the possibility of a local option sales tax, that I think in the long run, I still hold out hope that that could, that could balance out some of the ways that we pay, pay for things, so that we're not overly dependent on regressive property taxes. So that was, I said I was going to be brief, and I totally wasn't, I apologize, but a lot of various points were raised tonight, so, and of course, we can't address them all from the deus, but we have talked about them all over the last several months. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Anything further?
Thank you, I would just add to that, that there might be, if one were to enter into this conversation for the first time and not consider the graph that shows 2001 forward, a sense that it's going to be another, you know, 12% every year, that this will be somehow the trend. And my experience in the council is that the positions that we're finally able to fund tonight are ones that have been delayed and held, talked about for an awfully long time, and that the city is, for the first time, especially with regard to our roads budget, doing the responsible thing and taking care of the maintenance that's been deferred by decisions that were made previously, that, oh, we're going to keep the tax low and not fix the roads. So to me, this is a moment of catch-up, and in a way that it is balanced and not too great a burden. It is, remains a very great concern, particularly for our residents on fixed income, I'm one of them, that we be, continue to be responsive to that, and the investment in our industrial base, in addition to continued conservatism as a city, is our way out of that. So I feel okay with this budget. I wanted to just address that one point about, we can expect this year after year, not necessarily. And the last thing I want to say is, the one concern I remain to have, and I will hope to bring up in the new year, is that I would like to see the city develop a position on, on consultant costs for the studies that we do. I've asked for that, and we haven't, we could do so many things, we haven't done that, but the amounts that we earmark for the important work we have to do, I think we need to set more conscientious or more transparent analysis about how we pay for, for something like the strategic planning process, for instance. I don't yet, I have not yet seen the money, the statements to justify or to explain to me why that much money has to go into precision like that. That's also something we can control in the next year. It's not something we're paying for tonight. But I just mentioned it as a work footnote for the future of something I hope we can, can attend to in the new year. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Ness?
Thank you. I brought along my own property tax statement, just as a comparison. I live in a townhouse that the county says is worth $218,300. At the 15%, which was the number originally on these, at the 15% for the city, it went up $13 a month. If we take the 11.6%, which is what we would be voting on, it will go down $2.50 a month. If you took a 5% levy, it would go to just under $6 a month. So the difference between the 11.6 and a 5% is $3.50 a month. If I go to Froggy Bottoms and have one less drink, I've paid for that. Oh, I shouldn't drink when I'm with the police chief here. But as you can see, the numbers, you know, is, is it high number, 11.6? Yes, and I didn't want to vote for it. I had, fully intended to come to this meeting and say, I want under 10%. But if you look at your own numbers, and not take the number that's listed on the original tax statement, take 11.6, it's going down a fair amount, so I'm still torn, but I feel more comfortable. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay, there's lots of other opportunities to comment here, but I think I'm going to put mine here. I really appreciated the additional information that our city staff put together, and the different ways that you work to get the information out there. There's a lot of information on the website. Video was done, thank you for doing that, Mr. Martig. You know, we've talked about the budget on the radio, and this has been in process for the council since August, for our city staff, maybe since May or June of this year, and there's a lot of work that goes into this. But one of the things that I've seen from this council, and previous councils, but more recently, is a dedication to putting the plans that we've adopted to work for the city, i.e. not adopting the plan and then putting it on the shelf and pretend that it's going to get accomplished by somebody else, or shift the burden onto future residents of the community to take care of all the maintenance needs that we have within our community, so thereby shifting the burden onto future generations. That's something that I have not seen from us as a council, and yes, that can be painful in the sense of when you're looking at your tax bill. However, if we don't take care of it in a timely manner, it's only going to cost more in the future. And we've seen that over and over again. I'm really proud of the strategic plan that we've put together, and the multitude of different ways that we are connecting the strategic plan with this budgeting process. Thank you to our city staff for aligning and putting that connection. They're connecting the strategic plan to our budget. Very important, again, that we've adopted a plan as a council, and we've not put it on a shelf. We are going to accomplish it, and that's what our people that have elected us to office expect of us, that we're going to keep our word, that we're going to meet the needs of the community, that when we adopt a plan, that we're actually going to fulfill it. And I'm really proud to be part of a council that does that. It's very difficult, and yes, my taxes have went up just like everyone else's, and when you're on a fixed income, or you're unemployed, yes, it is very difficult, but we really have to think long-term and for the community as a whole. I thought that it was really eye-opening to see that we are now just back up to staffing levels that we had 20 years ago. It's absolutely amazing to see that, and yes, that progression up, it can be painful. However, if we would have stayed there and just kept the levy, I wonder where we would be at as a community. Maybe we wouldn't have to have these steep increases if back in 2002, there would have been more of a stay the course and adopt the plans. I think those types of things we really need to take into account. How, would we be in a different place with regards to our industrial tax base? I don't know that. Hindsight is always 2020. I'm looking forward to moving forward in a very progressive, strategic way, and I'm grateful to be serving with the council and to have the city staff here to carry it out. So thank you so much for all of your work on that, and thank you to all of you that are sitting up here at the deus alongside me for your hard work and willingness to move our community forward. All right, with that, one more comment, Councilmember Ness?
A big thank you to staff for putting whoever's idea, for putting the, all the fund balances in, in all the documents, that was very helpful, so thank you.
All right, all those in favor of Resolution 2021-121, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. The next agenda item is the consideration of adopting the final 2022 budget. It's Resolution 2021-122. Is there a motion? Councilmember Ness?
I will move. Make sure I get the right number, 2021-122.
All right, is there a second? Councilmember Nakazian?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of Resolution 2021-122, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We have two more agenda items with regards to the budget. The next one is the consideration of adopting the 2022-2026 Capital Improvement Plan, Resolution 2021-123. Is there a motion? Councilmember Nakazian?
I move Resolution 2021-123, as written.
Okay, is there a second? Councilmember Ness?
Second.
Okay, further discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 2021-123, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. And the last one with regards to the budget is the consideration of approving the 2022-2026 Capital Equipment Plan, Resolution 2021-124. Is there a motion? Councilmember Ness?
I'll move 2021-124.
Okay, and Councilor Peterson White?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 2021-124, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, thank you so much, everyone, for your work on that. That was a significant amount of our meeting here this evening, 30 agenda items. I cannot even imagine how much paper that would be. However, it would certainly put it in perspective, the amount of work and reading that people need to do in order to serve on behalf of the community, and the amount of work that our city staff put in to putting all of those agenda items together, so thank you very much.